Good afternoon. It's good to see each one of you here today. We finally got a break on the weather. Things are cooling down a little bit. And we appreciate your attendance. Roll call, Ms. Mekus?
Mr. Como.
Here.
Ms. May?
Here.
Mr. Beatty?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Mr. McCoy? Mr. Graves? Mr. Manley?
Here.
I apologize. Mr. Graves?
We have, uh, West Washington High School ROTC under direction of Captain Rayburn. And the invocation will be given by Ms. Siga Jones, a student of West Washington. If you'd like to stand and join us, please do so.
Right, right, left, left, right, 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 left, left, right, right. Color guard, halt. Left, face.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Freeze it. Colors.
Could you please bow your heads? Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather safely here today. I pray for your presence during this meeting, bringing peace and guidance to all those present. I pray all actions and words would be said and done to glorify you, Lord, and I pray this meeting will run efficiently. In name of prayer, amen.
Harry. Colors. Right, face. Forward, march.
Board, we need a motion to approve the minutes for the August 12, 2025 meeting.
I so move that we approve.
Minutes?
Have a motion in second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Motion carried. And we need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Motion carried. Personnel report, Mr. Geis?
Uh, we're good, Mr. Como.
All right. Any cards, Mr. Manley?
Yes, Mr. Como, we have two. Uh, Mr. Rice Gregory would like to address the board on item number 11 on the agenda, and also item number 14 on the agenda.
Okay, we'll do that at that time. All right, item number one, special recognition. Ms. Alan Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Como. If, uh, Superintendent Geis would join us down on the floor. We're excited today to recognize one of our employees in a program at one of our middle schools. We'd ask that Ms. Marquita Bowman, please come up and join Mr. Geis. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about Marquita and also the recognition. Ms. Bowman is a 13-year specialist who has been recognized multiple times nationally for the JAG program that she runs in our Richwood Middle School. In 2024, she was awarded as an outstanding national specialist with the top 10% of Louisiana specialists. Recently, in 2025, her program has been recognized for the National JAG Five of Five Award, which measures growth in her students' academics and promotion to the next grade while decreasing the number of absences, suspensions, and removing hurdles in the way of student success. Marquita teaches her students leadership through the JAG Career Association. Her students learn through career exploration and guest speakers about career aspirations. They participate in 17 hours or more of service learning activities in their community, especially for veterans, and they volunteer at the local food bank. Her students learn about their civic responsibilities, meet local civic leaders and representatives, and then have discussions. She's an inspiring teacher whose students learn through practical experiences and project-based learning. And about this national reward, award, only 11 middle school programs in Louisiana were recognized with this national award and only five more in the United States. So, one out of 16.
Asking Ms. Brown, her principal, and Mayor Brown from Richwood to join us. It's always great to have him here with us.
We have one more, Mr. Geis. Let's take another picture.
I'm so sorry.
Congratulations, Ms. Bowman. And that does conclude my rec- recognitions for today.
Thank you. Item number two, policies for consideration and approval. IFA 25, IFB GA 25, JBD 25, JCD AF 25, JDE 25, JGCE 25, JGCF 25. Mr. Adam Honesucker.
Good afternoon, Board. The Policy Review Committee met on August 18th to, excuse me, August 13th to discuss the policy changes that you were presented at our last board meeting for you to review and to vote on today. The, those policy changes are also in your packet for today. And the changes are a direct result of action that was taken during the last legislative session and by Bessie. And, uh, the committee reviewed all of the policy, all of the policy changes, and we agreed to leave the changes the way forethought had presented with the exception of one, and that was policy JBD, which covers absences. And what we are, uh, changes we are recommending concern makeup work. In that policy, what Bessie requires is that all makeup work by a student be completed satisfactorily and in a timely manner, but they have left the definition of timely manner up to local school districts. And, uh, what we are proposing is that the time that a student gets to do their makeup work shall not exceed, uh, the, the number of days they miss. So, for example, if, if a kid missed three days, then they would turn around and have three days to give their, have their makeup work completed. That is the only change that we've made. And, um, based on our recommendations, we would, um, ask for you to approve these policies. And I will, um, be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have a motion to approve these policies as presented?
I make a motion.
Have a motion in the second.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any questions, comments? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Item four, consider resolution for state Louisiana stipend for the 25, 26 fiscal year. Ms. Mekus? Oh, I'm sorry. Moving on, marked the wrong one off. Consider annual budget for the 25, 25, 26 fiscal year. Ms. Mekus?
Good afternoon, Board. You have in your packet the annual operating budget proposed for the 2025, 2026 year. At, and as it was reviewed in the public hearing conducted at 11:00 a.m. this morning in this room, the budget resolution, starting on page 10, going through page 13. Like to ask for approval.
Have a motion to approve, excuse me, approve the budget as presented?
I so move that we approve the 25, 26 annual operating budget as presented.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Now, item four, consider resolution of state Louisiana stipend for the 25, 26 fiscal year.
You have in your packet the 25, 26 state certificated and support stipend implementation. This stipend was approved by the Louisiana Legislature for the 25, 26 years in the same fashion as they have done in the prior two years. It is a one-time stipend for certificated staff, $2,000. Support staff, $1,000. There is a requirement on these funds that they be distributed prior to December the 15th. Uh, so we are asking for your permission to, um, distribute these funds on October the 9th, based on employment counts on October the 1st, 2025. Uh, last year, we had a little bit longer, um, gave my staff a little bit more time to, um, compile those numbers and to turn around the, this payroll. But what we found is that we missed some employees who were hired late in the year. Uh, and in the interest of including as many employees as possible in this stipend, we're asking to do this as an October 1 employment date.
This would be like we've done in the past, the, uh, the day we get out for fall break. So, it'll be to check our employees we would receive then.
We need a motion to distribute, give permission to distribute this $2,000 payment for October 9th for this people who were hired after or on October 1, 2025?
I so move we approve the stipend as discussed by Ms. Mekus.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five, consider dispersment of funds associated with the sale of Sterling Middle School, 206 High Avenue, Sterling, Louisiana. Ms. Mekus?
I'd like to ask for some guidance in the dispersment of funds of the proceeds from the sale, sale of the old Sterling Middle School. We received $1.2 million from the sale of the old Sterling Middle School. And it's been a question of how to distribute those funds. There are several ways that that could be done, as you all had, had explored prior with the timber sales. But researching funds that were put into the old Sterling Middle School, the sales tax district on the east, east Washstall, um, sales tax district did put about $3 million into that school for some major renovations and additions over the time that that school was used. It was originally, um, built with general fund funds, renovated with the east Washstall district funds. So, it has been proposed that that be divided into three equal parts for the three districts within the east Washstall school district.
Thank you, Ms. Mekus. I'd like to make a comment on that since that is my school area.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, we've had some meetings on this, and I appreciate your guidance and Todd's guidance on this too. But I wanted to kind of back up, do a little history on this so we all know exactly where, where we are at and where we came from on this. As you know, the bond was passed, uh, the first bond was passed, and we got the bid in on Sterling Middle School at $26 million, which was about six or seven billion over budget. So, in discussing with Dr. Coker and Rice at the time, we decided that we couldn't build the school and do the other construction projects on the east side without going back to the voters for additional money. We went back to the voters, and they graciously approved, uh, us to have the additional monies available on the bond, 10 mil, 10 more million dollars. Uh, no, excuse me, 20 more million dollars, at $62 million. We rebid at Sterling Middle School at that time, and the bid come in right at $32 million, which was 6 million over what the last bid was, previous was prior to. So, being that we were $6 million over budget on the new middle school, I had a meeting with Dr. Coker, and I think Ms. Mekus was in there, and I outlined exactly how I wanted to spend, uh, what cuts I was gonna make at that school, and also what additional funds I might be able to generate in order to make up that $6 million deficit. At that time, we discussed the possible sale of the Sterling Middle School, the old Sterling Middle School that's in question now over on High Avenue in downtown Sterling. I told Dr. Coker that I'd like to take those funds and make up the deficit in the construction of the new school, okay? Dr. Coker, uh, felt that was something that we could work with and agreed to that in the meeting I was in with him and Regina and several other people. I passed out a sheet outlining that particular budget item. So, we started construction on the school with a million-dollar projected sale price of Sterling High, the old Sterling Middle School downtown Sterling. We couldn't sell the old school until we finished the new school, okay, for occupancy purposes. But in the meantime, Regina was able to shift the million dollars from premium bond money over to the budget to help us accommodate, uh, the deficit that we were working under, okay? So, the fact that we switched over the million dollars from the premium bond money, okay, substituted for the actual sale price of the building. So, we sold the building several months ago, as Regina's already indicated, for $1.2 million. So, what I think would be the fair thing to do from a board's perspective is, go ahead and take the sale proceeds, and we will be reimbursing the bond premium money that was already allocated to the building of that school. So, basically, we're, we're replacing the money that we'd already taken out of the premium bond money with the sale of the school money. In doing that, I think it's fair for us to split the sale proceeds out as it would be premium bond money amongst the three board members on the east side. So, that would generate a proposal from me to share the proceeds of the $1.2 million sale of the old Sterling Middle School with all three board members on the east side, which will result in around $400 million per person. $4,000.
$4,000.
Excuse me, excuse me. I'll take this. I'll take this. Thank you, Davey. You know, millions start adding up. So, thanks, Davey, for that credit. It's $400,000 per board member on the east side. And basically, we're just swapping the money from the sale to replace the money that's already been utilized to build the school on the premium bond money that we had access to, thanks to Regina giving us that advance. So, that's how we want to distribute the sale proceeds equally to the east side board members. So, I'd like to make that motion that we, uh, distribute equally the $1.2 million, which we generate $400,000 per east side board member.
We have a motion in, need a second?
Second.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? And there's none. Motion carried. Item six, financial report for July 31st, 2025. Ms. Mekus?
So, you have in your packet the financial report for the period ending July 31st, 2025. This is the first month of the new fiscal year. Uh, you'll notice that our, our projected ending fund balance is $24.6 million in general fund and $27.1 million in District 1 MNO. Uh, this aligns with the budget discussion that we have, have had extensively today. If you will notice, in the actual expenditures for July in the general fund, we have spent $6 million. This is quite a bit more than what we had spent in this fund this time of the prior year. That is a timing difference. Basically, invoices come in at different times as we, as we begin the school year. I do not, uh, see that that's indicative of increased cost for the upcoming year. Uh, I would also like to bring your attention to the final two pages that give a little bit more, um, insight of revenue expenditures and fund balances for the general fund and MNO.
Any questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Mekus for this report.
Thank you.
Item seven, Finance Committee Report. Mr. Jason Thompson?
Good afternoon, Board. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, August 21st, 2025, here in this office of the Washstall Parish School Board. The agenda for the meeting is attached as well of the, as well as the approved minutes from the May 20th, 2025 Finance Committee. I would add, too, that I appreciate Mr. Manley for filling in for me that day as the, the chair of that committee. I'm, I'm told, Mr. Manley, everything went smooth and really well, so I appreciate you. There were three items, uh, that day that were discussed. Uh, you've already approved earlier today, item number one, uh, the annual operating budget for 25, 26. Uh, as you can see there in your packet, number two, I think Mr. McCormick will be coming up, uh, behind me today to ask you to consider, uh, the activity trip rates for buses. That recommendation will be made following me. And then also, uh, following my time here, Ms. Mekus will come up and ask you to consider an AG substitute funding request, um, here shortly as well. So, all three of these were discussed that day, and, um, you'll be asked to hopefully approve items two and three here shortly. The next regular, uh, scheduled meeting for the Finance Committee will be Tuesday, November 18th at 1:30 here in this boardroom. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer those.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Board.
Item eight, uh, consider and approve proposed rates for the activity trips. Mr. McCormick?
Good evening, Board. Last year, I went to Finance Committee and to the Board, and we changed the rate, uh, for the first time in about seven years since we had changed the rate for activity trips. It did not end up being the easiest and user-friendly way to make it happen. We had one rate for driving, one rate for downtime, and it became a bookkeeping, accounts payable, and paperwork nightmare throughout the whole system. And at the same time, it reduced the amount that the drivers had been getting on a regular basis. So, the original proposal when we met 2024 and 25, uh, to bring to y'all, the original request was go to a straight fee of $25 per hour, whether they're driving, whether they're downtime. If they're more than eight hours, it's an additional $25 an hour for those hours above eight. And then if they are overnight, then they are granted a $200 overnight fee for being on the road and, and away from their homes at that time. That does include, the program also would pay for meals in the hotel room if they were overnight. So, that's proposal. Let's simplify this. Let's go back to a straight fee of $25 an hour. Again, this only affects those trips that are done on the school side. Programs, Title I programs, uh, special need programs, their, their amounts are already written in their budgets. High set amounts, things like that are already written in their budget. So, that doesn't change those. This is only changing, uh, football games, cheer dance, you know, travel, going to the zoo, those kinds of things, and gets it back on a much simpler playing field.
$200 extra, uh, is that just for the motel room or motel rooms?
The program pays for the motel room and the food expenses for the driver. This is just an additional fee for them being away from their family and time.
They'll get $25 an hour for eight hours.
Correct.
And then the $200 six, uh, six, when is the $200?
Only if they stay the night in a hotel.
Which is not that often.
Correct. It is not that often.
I will say, I'll concur with Mr. McCormick. Say, our principals and bookkeepers have overwhelmingly asked for some type of change that, that is more user-friendly, so to speak.
Yes. But the 25 for if they left at 4 o'clock on a Friday afternoon, and they did not get back until 4 o'clock the next morning, it would be $50 an hour for those that 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th hour. Do you see? Yeah. All right.
Any other questions, comments? We need to have a motion to approve the activity trip rate as presented?
I make a motion?
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Motion carried. Thank you, Waylon.
Thank you, Waylon.
Item number nine, consider and approve AG substitute funding request. Ms. Mekus?
You have in your packet, uh, the procedures for professional and school business leave, substitute cost reimbursement. We follow these procedures as we bill, uh, the cost of substitutes each month. There are costs that we incur as a district and costs that are passed back to the school. Um, I was approached, uh, probably a year ago, um, from the AG teachers, and their request was that we also cover their substitute cost as they, they fell under, they weren't specifically excluded. But if you look on page two, in the very last bullet on the bottom of the page, participation in professional associations or organizations, board meetings or conferences. So, they kind of fell into that category, uh, with the AG program. But those of you who are familiar with the AG program and the requirements for that program, they, it's almost like they straddle the fence. There's, there are things that are considered. They're professional organization, but they are also required for their academic program. Um, it's not that they are going on these trips by choice, um, as extracurricular trips. These are programs that are required for the participation for their academic program. It also works very closely with their professional organization. So, they have, they have come and asked that we, um, consider that and reimburse cost of their substitutes. Currently, those are being billed back to the schools. I know they do a lot of fundraising, uh, on the school level to cover those costs.
Just to follow up, I think all of you are aware of how fortunate we are to have five great AG programs in the district that are very active. And like Ms. Mekus said, a lot of the trips that they take are part of their curriculum. And, um, Finance Committee approved this, and I would make that recommendation as well.
And this will go into effect when?
Immediately.
Immediately? Okay.
Yes, sir. I would like to, uh, we're, because we operate a month behind, um, as far as when leave is turned in and, and processed through payroll and billed, I would like to make this effective for the beginning of the current school year.
Board, I need a motion to approve the AG substitute funding request as presented by Ms. Mekus?
I so move that we approve the AG substitute funding.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10, Ms. See, Recommendation in a corporate agreement with the Union Parish School Board, Jared Peters.
Good afternoon, Board. I'm recommending, at the request of our Transportation Director, Waylon McCormick, that we enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Union Parish School Board to purchase seven of their school buses at a cost of $10,000 a bus. The total cost would be $70,000. Um, all these buses are, um, year model 2015. They're equipped with a camera system and air conditioning. Um, Union Parish is selling these buses in response to a decline in enrollment within their district. And, uh, we, Washstall Parish, we've sent and inspected those buses, found that those buses would be, um, an excellent addition to the fleet in Washstall Parish. So, we're asking for your consideration and approval of that cooperative endeavor agreement with Union Parish School Board.
Waylon, you, anything you want to add to that as far as information to the Board?
Wonderful opportunity. We'll have them for 15 years. The buses are all internationals. Our mechanic team is, um, 100% convinced they can keep them on the road. They are the easiest, uh, for our team to keep operating. Same camera system that we have on ours now. So, we simply will just be, uh, adding them to our software and database. Full air conditioner, 77 passenger. Um, we will be able to use these instant.
Had one principal this morning already excited about, she was promised one, so, there you go.
Ms. Regina, what's a, a new bus cost? About $70,000?
No.
No, sir. I think a new bus is upwards of $115,000, prior to adding.
It's a, it's a good deal.
And how much are we getting these for? These are $10,000 each.
True. Yeah.
Is this coming out of MNO?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
We need a motion to enter into a corporate agreement with the Union Parish School Board as presented by Mr. Peters?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion in the second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Thank you. Item 11, construction renovation projects. Mr. Hemphill? Item 11, construction renovation projects. Mr. Hemphill?
Good afternoon, Board. You'll see your handout. Weather's been great for construction here in the last week, week and a half. I will add, at the last board meeting, we evaluated the bid for Riser Project, which we awarded grindstone with that job. Since then, we evaluated that base bid and we deducted $53,000. So I have the contract over here that will be, the base bid less that $53,000. And then we'll be doing a deduct change order for some evaluation on the slab that we did for the dressing room. So that should create another deduction. Don't know what that amount will be, but it's going to be a nice one. Sterling High School, we should have that out for bid this week and be ready for the next board meeting to open the bids on Sterling High School. We're advertising Limo Elementary and have it ready for the next board meeting in October. Washita Junior High be about November when we get ready to open it up for November. And then Lake Shore will be around January when we open bid for it. Jack Hayes will be about February, and I got this list from TBA. They give me all these dates, so. And then East Washita around March, so. That's our upcoming projects that we have. Any questions on anything else?
When are they supposed to start turf fields for Sterlington and Washita?
They've started.
They're starting?
They've started. They degrasped them and they're working on them.
Projected completion dates like November?
Hmm, November, before season starts for sure. November, December, so. That's all I have. If y'all have any questions.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you, Stephen.
Rice, were you wanting to comment on this one?
Thanks, President. Como and Board. I have a lot of dates and numbers to quote, and I've written it down. I don't want to fall into Mr. Manley's misquoting. I'm Rice Gregory. Have you, y'all want to start the clock? It doesn't matter to me. But I'm Rice Gregory. I live at 129 Lamont Drive in Darbonne Hill subdivision, West Monroe. I'm also project architect for Sterlington Middle School. I prepare and oversee the successful completion of contract documents for a living. I have worked with the Washita Parish School Board since 1983 and numerous other public bodies. Worked on hundreds of publicly funded construction projects with hundreds of contractors. I'm here to give a final status and accounting for Sterlington Middle School, but I think it is important to give a brief history of this project. Any consideration of a public body's acceptance without contract fulfillment would be a betrayal and misuse of public funds. Back in the fall of 2019, an evaluation of all Eastside schools were evaluated by needs. The Keystone Project was a new middle school for Sterlington. In August 2020, a bond issue was voted on by the taxpayers for the trusted investment of $41.6 million of public funds for improvements to all Eastside schools. In September 2020, we embarked on the process of programming, designing, and detailing the specific requirements for the creation of Sterlington Middle School. After eight intense months of design and preparation of the required construction documents, the school board authorized permission to bid May of 2021. Bids were received June 29th of 2021 with a low bid of $28.1 million. During the evaluation of facilities in the fall of 2019, prior to the call bond issue, cost estimates were pre-COVID. The budget for Sterlington Middle School was estimated based on the recently completed East Washita Middle School. The low bid exceeded the established budget and bids were rejected July the 13th, 2021. Sterlington Middle School was designed for 600 students, and necessary cuts would have compromised the necessary occupancy. The school system exercised accountability and transparency. Explained to the taxpayers and the public approved an additional $28 million to increase budgets for all the Eastside schools to cover the COVID-related shortfall. Sterlington Middle School was rebid January the 13th, 2022. Per Louisiana Public Bid Law, the contract was awarded to the low bid contractor, per contract documents, in the amount of $30,396,000. The contractor was issued notice to proceed February the 21st, 2022. If you want me to, if, if you want me to pause right there, that's probably about my three minutes, and I'll comment on number 14, if that's okay.
Any questions?
Vice, I appreciate the good job you've done on building architect activities with that school. It's a fine facility, and I appreciate all your work. I know it was a long drawn-out process. I know you and I had lengthy discussions on the issue, but I do appreciate your patience and the professionalism that you showed in completing that school from an architectural standpoint and following up. We're bearing on the construction, making sure it was done according to specifications and the way it should be for the taxpayer money that we invested. I appreciate what you did.
Okay, thank you. I'll resume at, on number 14, if that's okay.
Right.
I just wanted to respect y'all's time and keep it within a three minute.
Thank you, sir. Item 12, the Board may enter into the executive session to confer with council and discuss prospective litigation relative to Sterlington Middle School liquidated damages and bearing construction pursuant to law, LA law, RS 4217, A2810, and Code 506. Do we have a motion to enter into the executive session for this particular topic?
I also move we enter into executive session, discuss the potential litigation on Sterlington Middle School.
Have a motion second. We need a roll call vote. Ms. Mekus?
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy? Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Mr. Como?
Yes. And while we're in executive session, we have another topic here involving students expulsion appealed. Superintendent Gas has asked parent to student in question whether he wants a public or private hearing. And I think the indication is that you would like the private hearing. Is that still your choice, Mr. Box?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So now we'll need a motion to enter into executive session, a dual executive session at the same time for the hearing on the expulsion process.
I'll make that motion, Tom.
Have a motion second.
Second.
Need a roll call vote. Ms. Mekus?
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy? Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Mr. Como?
Yes. So I guess we will now retire.
We're going to the superintendent's conference room.
Okay, okay.
Board, I need a motion to reenter in our regular public session.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, there is none. All right, in regard to our executive sessions, oh, I would like to go ahead and skip number 12 and go to 13 and do that one, then we'll do 12 and 14 together, so. The motion to enter executive session, we discuss the hearing, expulsion hearing, I need a motion to either affirm or reverse or modify the decision that was made by the board in regard of this case.
Make motion, expulsion be appealed.
I'm sorry, Mr. Como, do we need a motion to come out of executive session?
We did.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor, roll call vote, please.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Mr. Como?
Yes. In regard to items 12 and 14, dealing with the variant construction projects, need a motion to table both items 12 and 14.
I make that motion, we table those two items.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition, there is none. Evaluation of bids.
Good afternoon, Board, so we have one bid for evaluating 10-26 Western Road High School train room equipment with a budget of $60,000. I recommend that the Board approve three vendors as our lowest responsive bidders in a total amount of $67,054.55. You can see on that bid tab which items are awarded to those vendors respectively.
Need a motion to accept bid 1026 in the amount of $60,000 with the budget.
That's a move that we accept.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, there is none, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Permission to bid, we have nine. President's report, we have breakfast in the morning at eight o'clock at West Washita Ag building, if you'd like to attend, please do so. Our next board meeting is late in the month because of the fall break, the date is October 21st, that's planned to wear your black shirt for your picture unless that changes. And Mr. Geis?
Thank you, Mr. Como, just really quick, obviously, kind of hard to believe we're a month into school this week, everything has been going as planned, so continue to make adjustments where we needed. I'm glad Mr. Como told you about the breakfast at West Washita Ag, it's always good to hear those kids' reports as they come to us. We tomorrow also will be partnering with the Western Road West Washita Chamber to provide lunch for our first responders tomorrow, being on the anniversary of 9/11, we've traditionally done that. I'll also have my first meeting with our student, superintendent student advisory council tomorrow, they'll be helping with that, and then meeting with me afterwards. This afternoon, I'll meet with our teachers of the year that were nominated by eight schools, always a good day, just, I'll remind you this again, the employees of Distinction Banquet will name- will name our teacher, principal, and support workers of the year will be October the 28th, so that'll be here before you know it, but, anyway, that's all I've got, Mr. Como.
Thank you very much. Need a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion.
In a second.